We can begin our meeting now if you all are ready. Thank you all for being here this morning and I guess we'll start by seeing if there's anything before the presentation. Commissioners want to say anything?
Commissioner Howell has exciting news.
I'm a grandpa! Yay! 416 yesterday, number one came out, and that's all we have so far, so hey. Jane Esther, foot and a half long, seven and a half pounds. Healthy, everyone's doing great. And I'll tell you what, it was great being a grandpa because I held the baby for a while, it was wonderful. I said, "I guess I need to go, I'm tired, I get to go home now." Went to bed. I don't know what happened last night after I left, but I'm sure they had to stay up and take care of the baby.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's the beauty of it.
Okay, anything else before we get started? Any other exciting news like that?
I got exciting news.
Okay.
Today is the one-year anniversary of Katur Austin being here at Sedgwick County.
One year. Any more exciting news? Well, if not, then Mr. Manager, why don't you get us going with whatever's on tap today?
Well, today we have on tap the new director of MABCD, Chris Leiberman. If you could please, he's going to talk to you a little bit about some code issues.
All right. Good morning Chairman Enru, Commissioners, and Mr. Manager, thank you. So, yes, we have, we've actually got three items that we're presenting tomorrow, so we wanted to go over those today and discuss those. Jessica, Mike. Have I got, oh, right there. There we go. So as an overview, we will be presenting elevator/ conveyance code adoption. That will be a public hearing and then a proposal to adopt. So that includes elevator, escalator, and ADA accessible lifts. We'll also be presenting, and that includes an update to the code as well as Sedgwick County coming under code. Currently, that is enforced in the city, not in the county. Then it will also be sign code adoption and location permits. So to begin with elevator/ conveyance code, as stated, we'll look to, we'll have the public hearing portion. The current code that we have adopted is 2004. We manage 1,500 and change conveyances in the city. We are aware of 104 conveyances in the county, but we do not manage those as far as code compliance or oversight inspections, any of that. To the best of our knowledge, they are all taken care of by private companies. The insurance companies of the owners of those elevators require that they be inspected. So we know that more than 50% of those are Spirit/ Boeing and Cessna elevators, so those are being inspected. Those companies have already stated that they would prefer to come under our umbrella and with this code adoption and have us perform those inspections in the administration. So the three portions of this that we'll be bringing up are the 2016 safety code for elevators and escalators. That is updated, new and updated code. We'll also then bring the 2014 safety standard for platform lifts and stairway chair lifts. Obviously, we don't see a lot of those, but we do have that potential. Those would include handicap chair lifts in a building, potentially could get into residential there. 2015, the safety code for existing elevators and escalators will be a big impact, as we see on the next slide, because we would have to implement or bring those into code compliance. So this comes with a five-year implementation plan that would have us permit all of those elevators, escalators, et cetera, and would offer our services to inspect. That's an annual inspection, and then there's also a five-year inspection that's quite a bit more robust than the annual inspection. Under that implementation of existing elevators, it would also give, as we have it currently listed, it would give those companies a chance for us to permit and administer, meaning we would not have to physically do the inspection. They could still have their certified elevator inspector from a civilian agency or other government agency do that inspection and provide us the paperwork. We would validate that and give them our seal of approval. Also, to note with the existing elevators, that though it's a 2015 code, it most, it really brings existing elevators up to 1986 standards, so it does not force them all the way up to adopting the latest and greatest technology that would be outside of the way those are built. We would still work with their current mechanisms and just to ensure that those are brought up to at least the minimum safety standards in those cases. And then obviously, our goals with that are to, you know, we're looking to ensure that we're providing properly for our public safety. We do have a concern with the number of elevators out there, with our lack of current oversight with those. And then we also do see this as a support to local business. We do feel like that there is a service with that inspection that we could provide that would actually be faster and cheaper than what most of them are receiving right now through a civilian certified elevator inspector. So, and at that point, gentlemen, too, if you have any, I'm willing to pause for questions. Next goes on to sign code. If you would prefer to discuss that before we move on, or have any questions?
Commissioners, any questions?
We charge to do the inspections, right?
Yes, sir.
And how is our rate compared to if a civilian company did it?
We are, from the research we have done, we are cheaper. Chris, have I got Nordic over here, do you know, do you have a figure on how much? 50 to 60% from the numbers I've seen is the charge that I'm looking at, but we don't have full data, Commissioner, on what everyone's paying. We really only have data on the Boeing, or excuse me, I keep saying Boeing Spirit and Cessna elevators. Those are the only ones that we have.
And even though we're 50 or 60% cheaper, we're still recovering our costs?
Yes, sir.
In business?
Yes, sir. We have three elevator inspectors, specifically in MABCD, that work in the, with the electrical inspectors, and they would absorb this into their duties and same fees as we charge in the city right now.
I think you mentioned it, but if they want to go to a private company to do it, they can do that, it's no problem, as long as they submit paperwork.
Correct, sir.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
I guess that covers it for now, so.
All right, thank you, sir. And then we'll also be presenting sign code, and this is specifically county sign code. As we are changing the cities portion as well, but obviously a lot more robust, so this is one area where our sign code does have overlap, but is different. This is based on a Supreme Court decision, Reed versus the town of Gilbert, and that was about content of signs. And our sign code, our sign code that we currently have dated 2004, first of all, was the, that was the first sign code we had adopted. Previously, we'd used zoning code, and it is very much a content-based code. It does allow religious institutions, charitable organizations, to have a much larger sign than commercial businesses and then other agencies that would want a sign. So specifically, that Supreme Court decision said that we cannot regulate signs based on content or the organization putting up the sign. So we have removed that language, so all of that, the classifications associated with it are also gone, so this, of course, makes our sign code a lot smaller. The only other things that we did in the implementation was try to make it a little more understandable, easier to follow, easier to enforce. So we did make language tweaks, if you will, to, just to try to clean it up. An example of that is we have a one mile, we're allowed five signs, five billboard-type signs in one mile. Signs have to be 500 feet apart. There were a lot of questions in the enforcement area as to where does that mile start and stop, so we placed that mile on the section lines. So now, I know there was a question regarding where you have the city limit. City limit would be in the middle of those section lines someplace, and we have reworded that in order to separate that. So at that point, you would start where the county, where the city ends and the county boundary begins to the next section line. So we would still have a few areas there to manage, but that separates that. And then we did the only, one of the significant changes there that we'll be talking about tomorrow is we actually did lighten the restriction for temporary signs. We authorized small outdoor signs. Temporary signs are now allowed to be placed for 90 days and no more than 30 consecutive days. It was far more restrictive than that in the past. I believe, that's, yeah, that's my only slide for that, so. And again, I'll stand for any questions that we would have on sign code.
Please repeat that last, 90 days and 30 consecutive days. Say that again.
So for temporary signs, sir, yes, so you can place a temporary sign without a permit and can be up for 30 consecutive days. You could have it up for 90 days total. Kelly, is there anything we should add to that?
Before it was four consecutive days.
Oh, okay.
And limited to 12 per year.
Right. So much, much less restrictive now than it was previously.
I see. All right, thank you.
And you said that we don't regulate content of the signs?
We cannot regulate the sign by its content, sir. So for example, a church was allowed to have a 32-foot square, yes, 32-square-foot sign. Businesses were not allowed to sign that large, and so we cannot regulate size of the sign and give churches and charities a bigger sign than a business, for example.
Okay, but we don't have any...
Content would be regulated through zoning versus sign code.
Okay.
We don't regulate content at all. It's literally area, height, location, spacing, but we don't have a way of saying you can put up a sign that says, "I love my wife," but you can't put up, you know, something else.
Okay. Okay, just, I just wondered. Thank you.
One more question. Are there signs out there because of, because of this change that would be noncompliance with the new code that are already existing? Do we know of any situation like that?
Good morning, Kelly Dixon, MABCD. I don't think we'll have any that would be noncompliant. We have a lot of signs out there that were made originally to be smaller than they would be allowed now, so they would be able to actually go up in size. We didn't reduce the sizes of anything. We took the largest sign that we allowed in that zoning code and made that the standard.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. So to my knowledge, Commissioner, too, further, any signs that are in violation would be in violation of our current sign code and for whatever reason, we haven't caught yet or hadn't fixed yet.
Okay.
All right, thank you, sir. And then lastly, location permits. So based on the adoption of the 2012 building code, we did, we no longer now require buildings under 400 square feet to be, to receive a building permit. Previously, that was 200 square feet. So with that, we are proposing that we enact a site plan type location permit for any person in the unincorporated county who is going to put up a structure, and this would be nonresidential accessory structure under 400 square feet. There is a location permit process with the city. Again, it's a fairly robust process. It does include a fee. It includes an onsite inspection prior to and post placing the building. We do not plan to enact a program nearly to that level. This would be no fee, no specific format required, and there would be no onsite inspection required. We would ask that individuals wanting to build that structure send us a plot, could be on any format they desire. They can email, upload it to our website, mail it, whatever works best for them, come into the office, obviously, and let us know where they plan to put that shed, for example, or that accessory building. We would look that up. We would check for setbacks. Obviously, floodplain is a big one there, but utility easements, setbacks, and floodplain would be the ones that we would be looking at there. If their building encroaches on any of those, we would obviously not grant the permit, and we would advise them not to build the building. We would help them to find an area on their property where the building would work and go from there. But again, we do not plan to go out and do an onsite inspection, so if they were to violate our advice, if you will, and build without a permit, then they would be accepting the liability that if they had a later floodplain issue to include damage or an issue with their insurance company, or if there was a level of county or federal enforcement to come down in the future, then we would have record that they had not been permitted to build the building. There had been advised not to and asked to reapply for a different location. We also want to protect, obviously, our citizens from an issue where they may build on a utility easement, for example, not knowing that. Utility company shows up, lets them know, "You can move your building or we'll move it as we do our work." So we would like to help them in those situations, and that way they would have the information. And then, of course, from our position, it protects us as a county as federal programs are enacted, FEMA floodplain-type programs, and if there is ever a federal enforcement activity or then any federal ratings, federal audits, anything like that that we may be involved with or may want, may seek, we would be protected in that we are complying with federal direction and federal regulations to manage our floodplain specifically. And if there are any questions on that, I'll gladly stand for those.
Questions? Okay, for residential structure, though, we have requirements about location.
Yes, sir, and those would all be taken care of with the building permit associated with those. This would only be buildings that do not require another type of building permit.
Okay. Any other questions? Don't see any.
Thank you, Commissioners. I greatly appreciate your time, and Mr. Scholes, thank you. I think this was a great way to do this versus save you all having to deal with this in your office again this, yesterday afternoon or this afternoon, so appreciate that.
Hey, Chris, you have a fourth item on here, but I don't see anything, any issues with it. But anything you want to bring up about it, the agreement with the city, which should offer water connection fee, payment process? That's new business tomorrow, too.
And yes, sir, that is on consent. This is a contract, so we collect a city water and sewer tap fees for the city as part of our permitting process. Those fees had been reimbursed, if you will, or paid to the city. It was identified as some of the, in some of the financial audits done by the county that we did not have an actual contract to do that, and we were asked to do that. So Mr. Wagner and his counterparts drafted, I think Mr. Fessinger was a big part of that too, drafted a contract, so we have not paid those fees over to the city yet this year. So I still have all of the 2017 fees in our general revenue account. That totals at this point about $1.8 million. So this contract specifies that the first and second quarter fees, which are in the neighborhood of 1.6 and a half, will be paid over to the city and then on a monthly basis, starting with July and on, that by the 20th of the following month, we will provide those fees to the city. The only revenue we are withholding from that are the credit card charges that we pay to credit card companies. Usually, within the first week of the month, I know exactly what percentage we were charged on our credit card transactions, that we have given ourselves time in the contract to apply that to the balance, withhold that fee or withhold that charge, and then move the money to the city's account.
Okay, and we're going to track that, so it's an exact amount of what we were discounted, that's what we...
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, and it is, it's to the penny. So this contract actually specifies $42,197.68 of the money of that initial balance that we'll give them, that I have paid in credit card fees that will be held out by MABCD.
Well, it's, the city has either been patient or maybe not patient, but I mean, it's six months and we haven't paid, and I'm sure that they want their money.
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, I'm glad we got it worked out so that we can, you know, act like a business in that operation at least, so, okay. Any other questions? All right. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners, that's it for us. Round's complete.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have anything you want to bring up?
Real quickly, I got a question for Sheriff Easter, actually. Every morning, we get a little email that tells us how many prisoners that we have in jail, and I've just noticed it's been creeping up and creeping up, near up to about 1571 this morning. Is there a reason for that, or what's, I'm just curious?
You know, I think that there's, during CJCC and stuff, we've been discussing that. But final point of, we have multiple homicide cases from last year and this year with multiple offenders, so that's contributing to it a little bit. We have a little bit of an issue with the bondsmen who will not touch anybody with the Hispanic surname, because if they've been bonded out and charged with a crime, ICE has been picking those folks up and reporting them. And so right now, they're not bonding anybody out that they think might be Hispanic. That's contributing to it a little bit as well. But overall, yeah, it's up. We had 260 people out of county today, and that's the most we've seen in February and September. So, I don't know if it's because of the summer months, but you know, a lot of property crimes, crime handles up, that's contributed to a lot of it.
There anything that needs to be done, or you're...
We're, you know, we're working on issues. I'm working on an issue with ICE to hopefully eliminate the folks that aren't here illegally. We'll start bonding them out.
Thanks, Sheriff. Appreciate it.
But to your, to your knowledge, to our understanding, the alternatives to incarceration, I mean, we're fully utilizing those when appropriate as much as we can?
Yes, and at the end of August here, we'll have 50 beds over at work release that will be actually part of the jail, not part of work release. And so that will cause another 50 people having to spend, sending them out of county. So to answer your question, yeah, we're working with the fence bar, we're working with the judges, the DA's office, then maybe street lights and stuff.
Okay.
Right now, I've been trying to work on state parole hearings. Sometimes those things take 23 to 30 days on the average, which they should never take that long, because what you're talking about there is, with state parole, you're only talking usually two to day sanction against them, or they have to spend two extra days in jail. But they're already spending between 23 and 30 days that are just to have their hearing. So we're working with Judge Fleetwood, Detroit, and Mark Rudy before he left, and the DA's office, the founder's playing a play or in front of him, and they're looking at it. We have a lot of state parole.
Okay, and since we're not funding day reporting anymore, is it, is the city still using that on their side? I mean, is it full? And do we have opportunity where we could use it and relieve that pressure if we started...
There, again, a lot of the issue is, we usually run between 65 and 70% of pretrial folks in there, so they haven't gone to trial yet.
Yeah, yeah.
Or almost around 80%.
Okay.
So 80% of our jail, those folks, there's really not much we can do with them.
Okay, well, I appreciate you're all over it, because we sure don't want to have to think those numbers get too much higher, then that starts making us think about other issues that are painful thought process, so I don't want to go there, but...
Historically, Commissioners, we've provided you with quarterly reports on jail population, and that was provided by the manager's office. The sheriff and I have discussed quarterly reports, where it's clearly in his wheelhouse. He could maybe, if we could get you a more comprehensive report of the population, and then he could formulate, kind of summarize for you what's going on with crime rates and all of the moving pieces that we discussed during CJCC meetings, and we could perhaps get you a quarterly report at the podium during a meeting to get you up to speed and keep you updated on what's going on with jail. I'd be glad to share it on that.
Okay, well, that's, I think it's probably a good idea. I mean, I don't, we don't need them every month or anything, but, so we can kind of just stay tuned in to the issues, so, okay. That'd be good, thank you. Anything else, Commissioner?
No, sir, thank you.
I was going to say, I'm meeting with the Rockford Township this afternoon. I've asked, I think, David, do you have, plan to be there today?
Yes.
I think, I'm manager Scholes, I'm not sure, are you planning to be there today?
If you need me to.
Okay, I think I've asked Justin Wagner to be there. If any of the Commissioners would like to sit in, you know, there's option for one Commissioner if anybody wants to be a part of that today. It'll be at, I think, 2:30 this afternoon.
2:30.
And so I'm hoping that we can figure out a path forward. My idea that I've been talking about apparently is not optional. The state revisers has interpreted the law in such a way that it's kind of quashed the idea that I was hoping to utilize. So there's really no reason for a ballot question at this point, unless they want to dissolve themselves or something like that. There's other ballot questions they might come up with, but in terms of trying to solve the road problems, the idea of us trying to help them in some way and have them pay us back, that's not going to happen. So we'd like to talk about other options and things, maybe we can, we can provide some expertise other ways, perhaps, but they'll have to pay for whatever they utilize, but I think we're a pretty good deal for them, so we ought to be having that conversation this afternoon. So if anybody else wants to sit in, I just want to make sure you have, you're aware of the opportunity.
Are those folks down there, they're not at this point contemplating a vote to have the county just take over their township?
I would not say that. I think that they, there's a broad spectrum of opinion, whether you're talking about, you know, to one of the officials or talking to one of the people that's sat out in the county, out in the township. So you can get a variety of answers, depends on who you ask that question to. So I would say that right now, we hope that we're not going to see that type of an action, but I think that the more aggressive that they get their issues fixed, the happier people will get, maybe that, those other kind of discussions will probably drop off.
When would that have to be put on the ballot? I mean, when would it have to be decided? How, how much ahead of the ballot do they have to make that decision if they want...
They, our previous idea, we talked to the election commissioner, and she said that we'd had to have a ballot question to her by September the first to be on the November ballot.
Oh, okay.
So, again, changing directions, that probably won't happen, but it could call for a special election as well, which would probably be a mail ballot in that case.
That's, it's been explained to them that they just need to get their motor grader operator trained up, right? I mean, they, and we've got a school coming up, don't we?
As in, last week in September, we just made the arrangements next week, county's going to pay for it, except for there's a $75 fee for each person that goes, we're not going to pay for that, but we're going to pay for the people coming to school. We're not, the classroom part is, it's a two-day deal, classroom, we found a place in Derby, and then the actual infield training is going to be in Rockford Township, so maybe we'll kill two birds with one stone.
Well, that's a good idea. I mean, the demonstration maybe helped solve a mile or so of their road at least, huh?
Hopefully.
Okay, well, that's...
I, one of the, one of the folks that made a comment the other day, they said that our road grader personnel don't get much chance to actually grade roads, because we only have a lot in the county that we maintain naturally. Is that true?
We have about 50 miles.
Okay, so that's, that's enough to keep our crew totally, their skills are honed, because they know what, they're doing that all the time?
No, we have some guys that are, I'm going to say, experts. They've been here for 30 years, and they know how to blade roads.
That's good information, because that's, somebody was believing there was another perspective on that. They didn't think... They didn't think we had enough roads to keep us, keep us experts on this issue, you know, enough dirt roads, so. And they were, they were suggesting maybe we could practice on the roads.
How do you say you could go down our gravel roads and go down their gravel roads and tell a big difference?
Well, it's my hope, again, I can only talk to one of the township officials, because they're under coma as well, so he, he represents his personal opinion, and, and I think he'll have to raise his, his, his opinion at his next meeting, which is later this month. But I'm hoping that we can come out of that meeting with something we think is also acceptable to the commission and the county. So, again, to the extent that there might be some proposal hammered out that might be something, something for us to consider, I would, I would open this up to opportunities for my colleagues here to sit in if one of you has time to do that.
While we're talking about townships, the township meeting tomorrow night, this is my first one like this, evidently.
Six o'clock?
At six o'clock out at Lake Daffton. Are we putting that on? Is that a county?
No, the township puts it on, we're guests.
Okay. And is there any information we need to bring, or anything to prepare for this?
No, each, each Commissioner usually says a few words. I say a few words, and, you know, we have a lot of engineering people there. We're here to offer our service, you know, and expertise to help them with problems that they might have that they don't know how to solve, and we give them advice.
If you speak more than a couple minutes, he'll boo you, so... Okay, anything else?
No, if we're talking to engineers, I, I don't know if I'd understand it anyway.
Well, they're there, they're there to answer questions. Answer questions to the township people. Okay. Well, I had a question about the bid board process question. Had a constituent call me and said that the company he represented wanted to bid on our janitorial services, and he said that that contract had come up for expire, expiration, and that we decided we're just going to continue with the same people, because we thought their service and all was good. And he said, you know, we, if it came up to, to the end of the contract, we want to bid on it again. It was a, a one-year contract with four-year renewals, I think, and, and he's with, it used to be Southwest Paper, I think they call it Southwest Plus or something now. But anyway, he was wondering why, if the contract come to an end, we didn't bid it again, rather than just arbitrarily make a decision. And I said, "I don't know, maybe that's legal, and so I'll ask."
And all of it should, I know that our current contract for against rail to the Matthew, it expires September 2017, and so I, if it was an option to renew, like when you're out, I think we would have ten more discussions to this point.
Well, he's, it was, they bid on it in 2012 and didn't win the contract, so now it's renewed four times, and he said, so anyway, if you, I, I need to have an answer for him. And, uh, he's an old wrestler, so we've got to be careful with him. Okay, that's all I had. Anything else from staff, folks? Anybody? Mr. Counselor, you got anything to say? And, I mean, things in finance are a little calm right now.
I see, I keep saying it out loud, because I don't want to change anything. It works, but we're doing well.
Okay. All right. How about our elected folks? Treasurer, clerk, registered deeds? Sheriff? You already talked? Okay. All right, then if we're done, we're done. We're adjourned.
Thank you.